Uh, thank you for your patience tonight. Folks were running a little late. This time I'd ask for, is there any agenda additions or deletions?
I have nothing.
I have none.
Alright, uh, moving right along. Um, I'd ask for a motion for approval of the January twenty-fourth.
I'll make a motion to approve him as presented with corrections.
One second.
Okay, is there any corrections or deletions? Alright, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, highway, road commissioners report.
It's, uh, the weather's been up and down and we're, hopefully tomorrow if it's warm enough in the morning, we're gonna actually fill some potholes on Chambers Bridge and South Creek Road and on Walker Mountain. There's a few potholes, uh, just for an update on that part. Moving on, um, you wanna go on to the comp time?
Yeah.
Talking with Heidi, the treasurer, um, of adding in comp time, we haven't got it set in stone of how we can, we can set it up yet, but, um, my recommendation is, uh, thirty-two hours of time, which of time and a half, so we equal out to forty-eight hour total for comp time. And that be a cap at forty-eight hours for total. So if we did thirty-two and a half hours overtime, thirty, yeah, that'll equal out to forty-eight hours of straight time.
And that's at the most per year.
That's the most per year.
Yeah.
Um, with that being said, that I would put it in the policy that it be used, not to be paid out, but, um, I think Heidi's said something about there's a state legal aspect about that. She's gotta check into it. It might have to be paid out if it's not used up, but.
Like you can't, um, like push it year to year.
Right.
Use it in the one calendar year.
Correct.
So it is a calendar year proposal?
Yes.
And, um, I would suggest that, uh, for me, I don't have a problem with that. We, you know, and I'll let Bob speak to whatever he thinks. However, um, when we make a decision here tonight, I'm hoping that, uh, you and Heidi and Katie can sit down. And the reason I want Katie involved, so that she can essentially write up a policy with what, so that we can enter that into our policy.
Amendment to the original.
Yeah.
Yep.
What do you think, Bob?
Yeah, except I, I'm wondering would it be more beneficial to the employee? And I know it'd be confusing to keep track of, but run it on a fiscal year rather than the calendar year.
A lot of our stuff works on the calendar year.
Yeah, right.
Was like, you know, your sick time and stuff like that. So I would think it'd be easier to track it that way on that calendar year.
Yeah, yeah, probably be easier tracking. What I'm thinking, uh, if they use it, would they rather be able to use it, I guess, in warmer weather rather than, uh, in the winter? Cause if you run that on the calendar year, how long are you gonna extend that out that they can take it?
Well, be throughout the whole, the twelve months.
Yes.
While the, the timeframe.
The twelve, the following twelve months after they've done the twelve, am I correct?
You earn the comp time during the calendar year.
Right.
And so that any comp time not taken
They can use.
By December of that particular year, then it's, you're done with it. You have to then go into the next calendar year to start all over again. That's my understanding, that's how, um.
Yeah, and I see how Bob's looking at it. I didn't think of it that way, but.
Yeah, because this will be fine.
Mm-hmm.
Because where they pick up the comp time is this time of year.
Right.
Right?
In the winter.
And so that's fine for the first half of the year.
Right.
But then the second half, they build up comp time, then they gotta take it by December. They can, they can maybe use it deer hunting or something like this.
They would have to use it up before December thirty-first.
Right.
I see what Bob's saying.
Yeah, and that's how it's always run. Uh, not so much at CV did we do that, but when I worked down at Orange Rockland, down in Rockland County.
Yeah.
That's how we did it, but if you didn't use it, you lost it.
Yeah, oh, yeah, and there's no problem with that, but, uh.
The reason you'd wanna use it is in the summertime, as you're suggesting.
Yeah.
And is that, you know, when the summer's over, all of a sudden.
Push, that would push it to be used before July first.
If.
With the calendar, with the fiscal year.
Fiscal year.
Fiscal year.
Yeah, and then they'd be under the warmer weather because, uh.
Yeah, but you wouldn't, huh, that would force a crunch time from snow plowing, you know, like
To summer.
April fifteenth to July first, you have that short window that you actually would be using it.
Yeah.
And that'd be.
Well, in the summers, the big, spring and summer, beginning of summer is when you guys really have to go out and do a lot of road repair.
Right.
Plus of the.
That's where.
The winter.
Rather than they didn't take off, you know, that spring late, in late spring, early summer.
Well, let me put it this way, what is the, their take on it, the employees? Have you talked to them much, Cash?
We talked about the, the calendar, or the, yeah, the calendar year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Well, as long as they're comfortable with it, it's fine with me.
Give them. Yeah.
That would allow them to.
The only problem, the, I see Bob's thing about it too is, the only problem is if we had December where we, you know, built some up, how do you take that out before January first?
Yeah, we have Christmas time, vacation.
Right, yeah, but if it's snowing and.
If I, if I recall, the last two Christmases, the wrong crew were working.
We've been out.
Um, I think there's pluses and minuses to both.
Both ways, only.
Ways, and I think, uh, at this point with just three member crew, uh, it seems to me that it'd be more efficient, um, for the taxpayers in town to have this as a calendar year structure, given, um, you know, some of the conversation we just had here. Uh, if it in the future changes, we could always have another.
You can almost have another discussion, yeah.
Have an amendment put toward or something like that added to it, okay.
So at this point, uh, when you guys have a discussion, um, but we have to do that sooner rather than later, so that we can, um, you know, adjust our town policy.
Right, okay, so wanna table that until next meeting and?
Yeah.
Okay.
Till you have something.
We'll make a motion.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, I'd like to hear a little bit of the employees, employees in general.
Hi, Rob.
My apologies.
Hello, Robert.
Apologies, accepted.
Thank you.
Carry on, soldier. Uh, we were just talking about the comp time thing and basically
Okay.
What we're looking to do is, uh, have Cash, Heidi and Katie sit down to prepare a policy.
Yep.
And we'll look at it and formalize, formally, uh, discuss it at our next meeting and approve or disapprove.
I know that Heidi chatted with me a little bit about it, um, and one of the things that she wanted for guidance from us was what our cap was gonna be and what the rules around it being used were gonna be. So my thoughts were no more than two weeks during a fiscal, during a
Calendar.
Twelve calendar year, cause otherwise it's gonna, I mean, they could build up seven, eight weeks over this winter.
Oh, yeah.
If they wanted to, so there needs to be a governance on a maximum amount that can be used. I think two's generous. We might not even wanna go that high. Um, because most of them are already been here long enough that they're getting four to six weeks of vacation already. So if you're gonna build up, I mean, that's potential, a person could be off eight weeks a year.
That's where personal time in together, yeah.
I mean, do we, I mean, that, a person could be off eight weeks a year.
Yeah.
My, my.
That's a lot of time.
My proposal was, uh, thirty-two hours of overtime, which will cap out at forty-eight hours of straight time. Figured out the straight time, forty-eight hours, which be a week and one day.
A week and a day. I'm fine with that. If that's where we wanna cap it, that's fine. Um, and it's gotta be used, my, my belief is it's gotta be used within the twelve months. Um, you can't build up more than, so
Yeah.
The, the bank can be built up and used. If it doesn't get used in the twelve months, so by December thirty-first, gets paid out.
Yeah, right. That's why we were just agreeing on that technique.
So I'm good with that, if that's the direction we're headed.
So my motion was to table it for right now to pull up the draft.
Yep.
Present it next meeting.
Yep.
Alright, would you, uh, because you were in on the, all of the conversation.
Yeah, well.
You wanna second that motion for discussion?
Yeah, I'll second it and then, uh, well, like I say, I do wanna hear from the employees a little bit, uh, their input. Uh, but yeah, I'll second the motion.
Alright, uh, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Alright, select board warrants, everybody signed, um, Rick called and said that he had it work.
Oh, okay.
That's why he's not here, so just to give you a heads up.
My apologies, I was drilling holes and got carried away and lost track of time and.
I told you, you got hung up in the sap line.
You got a lot of help out there, does?
Uh, not this year. It's me right now.
How much you get tapped out, Robert?
I got about three hundred in so far.
Oh, good.
Was, uh, Creek?
Over here, yeah.
Yeah.
I got about a hundred and fifty to go over here and I'm done, so.
Well, you clean that off so you can bring the tank up there.
Okay, yep.
Chairman, that's all I have for highway.
Alright, uh, moving right along, there's, uh, no guests or public, so no public comments. Uh, the old, old business, we have the Kingsley Covered Bridge preliminary plans. And Katie, do you have the?
It's over here.
Case Robbie wants to check that out, it's the.
I was gonna say, it was emailed too, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought so.
But she has them on this bigger paper.
Okay.
So you can see, so.
I glanced at the, what was emailed and, I mean, it's not much for us to say about it.
No.
I didn't know if you guys had any comment or if you advise, like, I should post it on the website?
It should be posted, yeah, I would, I would post it and make it available in the town hall. So anybody who wants to see it. And from what I saw, it looked like they had already done mailing to all the neighbors and everything already too, it looked like. So I think we're in pretty good.
Pretty good shape.
Uh, one of the things I brought up before when we were not officially discussing it is the fact that, uh, there's not only, um, adjacent property owners are gonna be concerned, but a lot of people are gonna wanna know some information that live on each street and the
Oh, yeah.
Because they're gonna have to
Sure.
Go all the way down bump road and all that stuff. So that's, uh, yeah, putting it onto the, uh, website's gonna be good.
Well, certainly, I mean, the road commissioner's already aware, I think the number one concern we got was just making sure that the roads.
Bump road and.
Bump road and, yeah, that they can travel. Which we're gonna have to just do the best we can.
Alright, the inclusion resolution discussion, do you wanna speak to that, Katie?
Um, Rick had gave you copies last meeting and you guys voted to table it to discuss tonight, so a little bit more time to go over. Um, Rick had mentioned that in the article, it does say that, um, I believe the governor had already signed off on it and then towns are adopting if they wanted to. So I'll leave that.
I was gonna say, so my understanding was it was a governor policy already anyway? And based on that fact that it's basically state policy, I personally don't think that we really need to
Get adopted.
Get involved. I think that it's already been adopted statewide, so, I mean, I think all of us sitting around this table would say that, from my perspective, um, you know, that we certainly, as a board, I mean, I, I can't, we can't speak for every towns person, but as a board, you know, we are open to all businesses, all people, all, you know, we, that's the way we are. So I, I think that it's already a state policy and I think that I, personally, I think that that's where it is. I think it's, it's, it's a state policy. I don't, I don't think we can really.
There's nothing we can do to change that, uh.
Nor, nor would we, I don't think.
No.
Well, I mean, that's, yeah.
That'd be a different thing, but, uh.
I think one of the things we might consider is, uh, also making a brief statement on the town's website and that, uh, you know, if anybody is concerned about this, that is, is, it is a state policy. And at this point, the select board is gonna follow the policy, uh, by the state. So that may, um, quiet down any concern. However, if there is a concern, I'm sure those citizens who
Will hear it.
State, they're, yeah, still coming and talk to us about it, but just for the public, uh, at this point,
I mean, I mean, yeah, I mean, even within our policies, you know, we have all of our non-discriminatory
Oh, yeah.
Language that we have and, you know, I, I think, like I say, I think, in my opinion, it's kind of already there. I think that's, that's where I'm at, but.
It's there and, uh, there's just no need of adding another layer of bureaucracy under it.
That's right.
If that's what you wanna call it, you know, uh.
So would you like to add something on the website about that?
Yeah, just say that it, it was discussed as an open meeting and that at this point, we're just following state, uh, mandate, whatever you wanna call it.
Excuse me.
Heard the P A C I F, loss control, uh, recommendations. That's what you have in this folder here, right?
Yep.
Yeah, so the loss control and safety grant kind of go together. To apply for the safety grant and get a hundred percent reimbursement, you need to have all priority items closed and fifty percent of any items from twenty twenty-fourwards. Um, so if you look at the transfer station packet, um, I believe five out of the seven items are, um, do allow some issues.
Yep.
Um, and two of those are high priority and then there's one high priority electrical issue here at the town hall. So I think I'm here asking permission to ask electricians for quotes to get some electrical work done. So I highlighted, um, the electrical as, yeah.
Mister Chairman, I suggest we let Katie reach out to some electricians if she can find some that are not busy to get quotes on this. If you need a motion, I.
Uh, wanna make that motion then, that statement of motion?
Yes.
Anybody wanna second that motion?
I'll second.
Um, the other packet is, or an audit assessment that Wade did for us, um, and that was items should get pulled out when we get the new desk.
This is just, that's information.
Kind of, yeah. So I don't know if you want to get quotes and then bring them back to you for the next meeting?
Yes. And this, uh, it's like for the electrical standing desk and stuff, you have a, just something signed here, Katie, is that what you're?
Yeah, you have to sign up on that, um, so Wade is the one that was working on the safety grant and the loss control thing. Um, so he said to sign it and get it submitted, even though our loss control items are finished, but we could kind of do them simultaneously.
Thank you.
But, um, I don't know if you wanna finish with the one motion before you move on.
Favor.
Alright, this is motion made, seconded, uh, we've had some brief discussion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And then with this, uh, grant application, I'd ask for a motion just to sign this so we can get this moving along.
Make a motion that we go ahead and, um, sign the, excuse me, the, uh, grant application for the, uh, well, it's the o- office items.
Yep.
And you sign that on behalf of the board, right?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, and that, included in that motion that the chair sign it on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing that all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Let's get past Katie.
That's yours? No, you're gonna do it, okay.
I got one right here. Uh, Bob did.
A safety grant.
That was.
That was it, right?
Alright, that was the second thing we, we, uh, but, uh, I just forgot to check it off, so.
I mean, looking through this, I know some of these are, obviously, we need a price, we need.
Cause electrician, it's gonna be electricians work, but.
Yeah. My question is popping blanks in a box, we can do that, can't we? So, cause that's. Aye.
One of them, Wade did say, oh, you could do that yourselves, but the comment was like, has to be done by.
Actually, it's nothing for, it's electricians right there working on that box.
To do it, but.
You can just do it and have it.
Putting blanks in the box, I'm pretty sure you don't have to, I think anybody can do that. I don't think an electrician has to do it.
Just to cover.
But to be on the safe side, uh.
Cause that's the issue here and there's blanks apparently that are out in the boiler room.
Down, downstairs.
And then there's blanks out at the transfer station.
Right.
And if the electrician's right there and let him do it, he'd have everything.
Pop them in.
He'd have everything right there with him.
I mean, the, the bigger issue, obviously, that is the exposed wiring and all that, that's the bigger.
Did anybody ever put the cover back on that panel in here?
Didn't know it was off.
It was off for a while. I didn't, I haven't looked at it.
Hmm.
That's when, uh, what's the name, put the new wiring in here? And you forgot to put the cover back on the box.
Are there any other, if you like look through there, um, are there any other items that you wanna get done or?
I think it's important just to get the ones that are necessary for
Modern.
Electrical safety in the building.
Yeah.
Modern to high.
That first. I'm sure whatever electrician comes in here is gonna say, oh, while I'm here, do you wanna do this? So let's.
Yeah, well, there's a, yeah, there's a few, like, um, me and Cash have to have a couple of programs, um, like written down for the highway department. Um, and then we have to get this for safety updates, little things like that.
We've done some major stuff down the garage and stuff, done.
Light.
Took care of a lot of this.
Yeah. Yeah, that looks pretty good down there.
Um, Dave come and rehung the wire to the salt shed and that kinda stuff and that was one of the big, biggest things.
Is that Fitzgerald and that? Yep.
Had a bucket truck? Did he do that with a bucket?
Extension ladder, didn't he?
Extension ladder, I think.
Last time he did it, we had a bucket truck in there. That's another story.
Which if you very well may not find an electrician, just as a heads up, um, Dave will be back May, eh, late April, early May. So if worst case scenario, we have to wait till he gets back, we may have to. I think Wade's just looking for it to be lined up, basically, that it's gonna happen, so.
I can just make a note, like, don't predict anything till we get it worked on.
And Dave's on board with like the vault and some of the work that needs to be done.
Mm-hmm.
Let's come back and, you know, time.
Yep.
Can he, is he, um, available to like get quotes from them right now? Like he could.
I doubt it.
You'd have to look at the job.
Cause he's gonna see the job in Ethan, Florida.
Okay, cause I was, um, like Heidi recommended sending that specific like ticket to them to get like itemized things. I don't know if they have to see it to.
Can certainly send it to him and see what he says, but I would guess that he's gonna say he's have, he'd have to see it.
Doesn't hurt to try though.
You can try.
Yeah. May surprise you. Alright, uh, town officers report, we, that's all written up and.
I don't think I have anything tonight.
Yeah, okay. Um, Rob, do you have any concerns?
Uh, no, I don't think that I've got anything tonight.
Alright, uh, the only thing I wanna make, uh, open and honest is I had gotten a couple of phone calls from Todd Fillmore.
Okay.
Yeah, and there's a school board meeting tonight and he did ask if one of us could have gone down there and I said, no, we have a select board meeting, um, and he, uh, wanted to know if, uh, you had any, um, other statements from the school board or anything. So any, um, public comments that we had, I asked him to look into the previous meeting minutes and, you know, I didn't, well, without discussing it in public, I, I didn't wanna make any, um, comments, yea or nay, it's already been done, so anything you have to say, uh, regarding the select board to the school board is all covered in the emails and, uh, minutes of meetings. So Katie, you pass some of that information on to him, uh, again. So I just wanna make everybody aware that.
I think that we've made it clear from this board and I think it's not changed that, um, I know that the school board situation has heated up again in the last couple of weeks, for sure.
I see it as.
Um, and that's typical around election time anyway.
Yep.
Um, I would say that, you know, from this board's perspective, we, we know that, um, all records are public record.
Right.
And, um, you know, anybody's available to look at any of those, uh, you know, emails and whatever, which I know is what, uh, Mr. Fillmore especially did some public records requests, which are certainly within his right to do. Um, I think that, um, we have attempted to make, uh, good effort of, you know, since the, we, we obviously did what we had to do back with the special election. I still think we made the right decision at that point.
Yeah.
Um, but the current situation, in my opinion, needs to play out within their board and within the citizens of the towns uh, as they take it to that board. Um, as a citizen of Clarendon, I certainly am free to express my disappointment in what I'm, some of the things I'm hearing and some of the things I'm reading.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but again, it's gonna ultimately be, um, up to all the different things that are gonna be coming down, uh, to, and one of them is the election. There's gonna be, you know, election certainly makes decisions as well, so I think, uh, from, from my stance, this board just gonna continue to watch and see what happens.
Mm-hmm.
So.
I think we, at the last time we had a discussion, eh, the truth of the matter is, as far as our board is concerned, uh, we wanted to do the right thing by the taxpayers in town.
Sure.
But when we just, uh, a moment of discovery, when we found out what the process was, uh, I think we made it clear in a previous meeting and here again that we feel at this point, um, you know, there's a lot of things going on at the school board changes.
Oh, sure.
I would suggest.
Sure.
And as far as, um, you know, as, as you mentioned, our board is one significant thing in town and the school board is one significant entity, entity in town. So because of what the process would be, I, I think that we felt, and this was discussed in an open meeting. because of what the process would be, I, I think that we felt, and this was discussed in open meeting, that, uh, instead of putting e- extra stress on kids that go to that school and stuff, that, uh, unless somebody petitions our select board to consider going out of the district, we decided to put this to rest, so.
Sure, and I think that, um, I guess I'll go there and say it, one of the things that came to light in one of the emails, I think that, um, was bouncing around out of the public records request, was an email that expressed, uh, at least one or two members of the district school board expressing their disappointment in the Town of Clarendon Select Board. Um, we're two different entities.
Mm-hmm.
And, and quite frankly, um, I'll be so brave as to say it, if another entity is disappointed in us, I don't serve the other entity, I serve the citizens of the Town of Clarendon. And at the time, and what they are supposedly disappointed in us for, I still stand by today and say we did the right thing for the citizens of the Town of Clarendon. So, express disappointment all they want, we still did what we needed to do, and that's where I will stand.
Yeah, I think that's where our entire board stands, but I'll let you guys speak to what I'm done, if you have any further.
I would just, uh, said I totally agree with Robert's statement, you know, of what we done, and what we're doing, and go from there, and let's see where it plays out.
Oh, absolutely.
Cash?
Now I call the same thing.
All right, if there's no more concerns by any board members, I'd ask for a motion.
I got, I got just one little thing, Cash, up, I should ride up to the road, up on the Cold River Road, and I'll be damned if I can tell you exactly where, but it's beyond where, uh, Pine Rock Lane comes in there.
Okay.
Just below Shehe's, somewhere between there and, uh, well, down where the river came up, there's a heck of a pothole right in the driver's lane, on the right hand side.
We're hoping to grab that tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Okay. That's all I have, other than to say that, uh, I was down at the garage and I liked the lights that they put in down there, it's great.
Um, my thing, just a reminder, you got town meeting at twenty-eighth.
Yep.
Of February, and voting here at town hall, March first.
Yeah, and town meeting this year should be on, we should get the word out, it is in the Grange Hall this year, not at the elementary school.
Yeah.
So the town, the town meeting will be in the upstairs of the community center, not at the, so basically, just gonna be across the parking lot, but people, you know, want to make sure they know that early, don't go, don't go to the elementary school, come to the Grange Hall.
And the hours of voting here?
Ten to seven, I believe.
Yep.
Yep, and.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Set up is at one o'clock, I think, is it?
The day before.
Day before.
On the twenty eighth.
Yeah.
Yeah. Who you setting up?
You also have on your schedule that you're gonna have a select board meeting on the twenty eighth, do you want to keep that, or do you want to cancel that? Cause they fall on the same day this year.
Town meeting.
The town meeting is seven thirty, so we could probably still do a six o'clock meeting, or you could cancel it.
No, this is gonna be all set up, you're not gonna be able to have a meeting here anyway, I would say we just cancel it, I'll make a motion that we cancel our twenty-eighth meeting, and just go to the, we can go to the next one.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll second.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, but let's get that written and make sure it's in the, you know, posted around town or, um,
Yeah.
On the site to the town website.
The location is in the little town report pamphlet that they're sending out, as far as it being the Grange.
Good, good. Which I believe pamphlets went out today, yeah, they did, so that's, people, about the time they're watching this, probably will be getting their pamphlets, I believe, cause I think the auditors finished up that part of things.
Yeah.
Did they get the book list in yet?
Uh.
Next week.
No, they're, they're, they're run fairly close to town meeting, you know, just a week or so before.
I like to have those in my filing cabinet at home, so.
Um, yeah, yeah.
All right, entertain a motion.
So moved.
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye.